Good evening, I'm going to call this meeting to order, the time is 7:30, this is the regularly scheduled council meeting for March 24th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Portemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming. Councilman Muir.
Here.
Councilor Rorback.
Here.
Councilman Saltus.
Here.
Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Greyston.
I am here, can I please get a motion to excuse Councilman Fleming, he did give notice.
Your Honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, there's a support.
Your Honor, support.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no, motion carries, he is excused. I will be doing the invocation and leading the pledge this evening, I invite you to stand if you would like. People are often unreasonable and self-centered, forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives, be kind anyway. If you are honest, people may cheat you, be honest anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous, be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow, do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough, give your best anyway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up, we have approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move the two items under reports, the Planning Commission appointments and the Library Advisory Board appointment, to the consent agenda, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you, motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no, motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to open the meeting to the public, this is the opportunity for the public to speak, I ask that you go to the podium, direct your comments to me, give your name, address, any affiliation with the city, take three minutes with that, so open to the public.
Would that be me?
Yeah.
Sorry, I've never been to a political meeting yet. My name's Rob.
Oh, sorry, if you've got there, yeah.
And if you pull the microphone down, it can be recorded.
To be fair, none of us would like to go to political meetings out there, so you're going to get plenty.
I'm actually very interested, I wanted my daughter to come as a candidate through the political meeting. Thank you, so my name is Monica Stevens, I'm on Lessinger Elementary's PTO. We are presenting tonight this paper from the state of Michigan Gaming Division, the Local Governing Body Resolution for Charitable Gaming License. I've only been on the PTO two years, but I've collected bits and pieces of information there that we are not officially a not-for-profit. So for the state of Michigan to allow us to hold a raffle, we are required to be basically identified as a not-for-profit. I did bring paperwork with me, if you need to verify it. And then a little bit about our craft show, I only have three minutes, it's April 12th. If you have kids, we have pictures with the Easter Bunny for free, it's $2 admission, we're going to have hopefully a 50/50 raffle, we're going to have prize basket raffles, we have over 70 crafters and artisans coming in, and we actually created an area for young crafters, they get two hours for free, they can come in with their parents and sell whatever craft that they make, and it's just kind of teaching them like the firsthand how to do business and get their feet wet. But we did invite Lampier students to that, and we also invited Madison students to that, so we'll have 16, we have two more spots available if you know any kids for two more, but yeah, so that's kind of what we're doing, you'll see our signs around, I did call the code enforcement to make sure I was putting them in the right spots, hopefully I am, I don't know, we'll find out. But anyway, and then I just wanted to say, my daughter Ravenna is going to be one of the crafters there, she actually was awarded something called the Acorn to Oak Grant, and they awarded her $800, and one of her projects that she wanted to do was to help Lessinger's PTO launch this, so she was awarded that, so she paid for all of the signs, the advertising, some of the supplies for the show. So we're pretty excited, we're hoping to make this an annual event, and the coolest thing is, we got enough crafters within our city and surrounding areas that we didn't have to look elsewhere, so, a lot of crafty people here. And we did bring two entrance admission tickets to everybody on the council, I apologize, City Attorney, Mr. Sherman, I didn't know you'd be here.
Well, I would be happy to send you some if you'd like.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
And I'm always here.
Okay. All right, thank you guys, thank you. Do you need the paper, or did you already have it? I have it.
All right, thank you, and would your daughter like to speak? She doesn't have to.
Do you want to talk, then?
No, that's fine, that is totally fine, all right, well, thank you for coming out, appreciate that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Your Honor.
Oh, you know, if she wants to give them to me, I can pass them out.
Oh, okay.
If she comes up, maybe have her hit the gavel.
You want to, well, if you're here at the end of the meeting, you can hit the gavel.
There you go.
Thank you. Great, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one, I am going to close comments, and we are going to move on to the consent agenda, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Motion to support or to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
Yeah.
Support.
All right, thank you, okay, a motion has been made and seconded, and just to go over, there are five items, there's the City Council Special Meeting Minutes from March 10th, the Regular Meeting Minutes from March 10th, the Local Governing Body Resolution for Charitable Gaming Licenses for Lessinger's Elementary PTO, the Planning Commission Appointments, and the Library Advisory Board Appointment. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no, motion carries, and congratulations, it has been approved. All right, next up, we have the award purchases, first up, we have environmental Tier 11 sites, specific reviews for Habitat for Humanity.
So Madison Huts has partnered with Habitat for Humanity to administer the Neighborhood Improvement Program through the Community Project Funding Grant for $850,000. Habitat for Humanity is responsible for implementing and managing the home projects, including the required Tier 2 site-specific environmental review required for each address. As a result, Habitat for Humanity solicited quotes from qualified companies that were available to work with in the timeframe, and requested approval to award this contract to ASTI Environmental to be approximately $2,364 per address or project, with a total of around 38 projects. The contract with the environmental testing company will be structured as a blanket contract agreement. Staff recommends that council approve the Habitat for Humanity to utilize services at ASTI Environmental for Tier 2 site-specific environmental reviews for each address, at an estimated cost of $2,364 per address, for a total amount not to exceed $90,000. And we're approving this for Habitat because they are a subrecipient of the grant that Madison Huts received, so we applied for the grant, got the $850,000, and we're contracting with Habitat to actually do the work. And Scott Milliken, who is the COO of Habitat, is here today, if you have any questions for him.
All right, thank you, what is wish for council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Let's see if I can do this right, I move that as the lead grantee for the organization with Habitat for Humanity, as subrecipient, I move that we approve the ASTI Environmental for Tier 2 Site-Specific Environmental Reviews for the addresses at an estimated cost of $2,364 per address, for an amount not to exceed $90,000.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
Thank you, a motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no, motion carries, and then next up, we have from the Director of Public Services, the replacement of vehicle number 704.
So the fiscal year 2025 budget includes funding for the scheduled replacement of vehicle 700, which is a fire department utility vehicle. In anticipation of the addition of the Deputy Fire Chief position, DPS and the Fire Department staff met to determine future vehicle needs, and properly align the fleet with the administrative and utility vehicles. With funding programmed in next year's budget, the proposed measure is to purchase 704's replacement now and 700's replacement next fiscal year, planning for a downsize to the mid-range pickup or SUV. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of one 2025 Ram 1500 Crew Cab, as quoted in the amount of $49,087 from LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Lansing, through the Ma-Dee Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Funding to cover the budget overage is available in the Fire Department line item account.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion to approve from council, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move we approve the purchase of a 2025 Ram 1500 Crew Cab for $49,087 from LaFontaine Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram of Lansing.
All right, thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
All support. A motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no, motion carries, and then item nine, the 2025 Downtown Streetscape Project, the 11 Mile Road, John R. to Lorenz.
This project consists of improvements to the roadway and the right-of-way along the 11 Mile Road from John R. to Lorenz. This project includes reducing the roadway from four lanes to three lanes, the addition of a 10-foot multi-youth path on the north side of 11 Mile, and bumped-out intersections and landscaping. Staff concurs with the recommendation of our city engineer, and recommends that city council award this bid for the 2025 Downtown Streetscape Project, 11 Mile Road, John R. to Lorenz, to the lowest responsible bidder, Delicio Contracting of Clinton Township, in a total project amount of $888,953. Funding is programmed in the 2025 budget, and just to remind everyone, most of this funding, or 313,000 of this, is coming from grant funds from Oakland County, and $400,000 is from the Downtown Development Authority.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion to approve from council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the as-read by our city manager, or do I need to read the whole thing out?
No, that's fine, all right, is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
The motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no.
No.
Motion carries, aye, one, and then number 10, the Director of Public Services, scheduled replacement of vehicle number 424.
The fiscal year 2025 budget includes funding for the scheduled replacement of vehicle 424, a 2003 Sterling Silver Single-Axle Dump Truck, funded through the Solid Waste Division. This vehicle is utilized throughout the year for the general maintenance of hauling, water main, and other construction projects, leaf collections, and snow removal. At 22 years of age, it is in extremely poor condition, and is noted on the vehicle condition analysis, and warrants priority replacement. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of one 2026 Freightliner 108 SD Single-Axle Truck Chassis, as quoted from Wolverine Freightliner of Mount Clemens, in the amount of $129,671, and the truck build-in equipment, as quoted from the Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell, for $194,795 through Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. This represents a total purchase price of $324,466. Funding to cover the overage from the budgeted...
Budgeted amount.
From the budgeted amount is available through significant savings in the purchase of our forestry truck, 525, this past December.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion to approve from council?
Your Honor.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the purchase of the 2026 Freightliner 108 SD Single-Axle Truck, as quoted from Wolverine Freightliner of Mount Clemens, in the amount of $129,671, and the truck build-in equipment is quoted from Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell, in the amount of $194,795.
Thank you, is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Support.
A few motions have been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against saying no, motion carries, and with that, I invite closing comments from Councilman Muir.
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy spring, although I know the weather doesn't quite feel like it, so there's lots of fun stuff still going on at the library indoors. I promise you that the weather is going to get warmer here, because our summer brochure is out for the RUCs Department, so a lot of good stuff there. And don't forget, Little League Opening Day is on May 17th at 10:00 a.m., would love to see all of you there. If you can make it, make it around 9:30, so we can get organized and head out to the field, that'd be awesome, and Monday, next Monday, we're having our trash talk, not trash talk, but talk about trash. At 6 o'clock, I think, I'll, City Manager Marsh, Marsh can verify the location, we've had a couple of conversations about where that's going to be held at, but please try to join that, we'd love your input. Unfortunately, I will not be able to make that meeting, because I'm having surgery on Monday, so I'm sure I'll go well, I'll look forward to seeing the recaps of it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, first, thank you for the admit one, a couple of tickets to the craft show. Both of my daughters are absolutely very crafty, so I'm going to have to make them rock, paper, scissors for who comes with me. I'll make sure to drop by, and I'm sorry, what was your daughter's name again?
My kids are great, this is Ravenna.
Ravenna, okay, just so you know, my dad used to bring me to council meetings in this building too, and I was also bored, so you're completely fine warranted. But thank you for coming out, and thank you for letting us know about the craft show. And then the only other thing I want to say tonight, it's from a personal note, so I am an uncle for the first time, my niece was born last week, and you know, her name's Bonnie, she does not lie over the ocean, she's here in the state of Michigan, and so just really excited about that, I finally get to be an uncle, it took a little while, but you know, props to my brother-in-law for making that happen. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Your Honor, first I wanted to say thank you both for coming out, it does take a lot to get up there and talk sometimes, we can talk forever, but you know, to stand up there, we appreciate it, so I'll attend as well. Secondly, I wanted to just let everybody know of an event going on at Central Church, their mission of community is doing a kindness closet, it's an opportunity just to provide people with coats and socks, hygiene products, so they are collecting those things to hand them out, so it was a pretty cool idea, imagine this, a thrift store where you can just go grab stuff, if you need a coat, you can grab a coat, if you need socks, you can grab socks. So they are collecting, oh, and there's no bait and switch, so it's not like a, you know, here have some socks and have some Jesus too, it's just a community event, so if you want to contribute, you can bring some brand-new socks and underwear, some hygiene products, like toothbrushes, toothpaste, deodorant, soap, etc. They're looking to give out adult clothing and shoes, kid clothes and shoes, linen, backpacks, totes, purses, everyone is welcome, everyone, even people who might say, "Not me," nope, you too, everyone is welcome, it is March 30th, 2025, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., so. The other thing I wanted to let you guys aware of, make you aware of, is that the HRC is partnering with the Chamber and the Asian 168 Group, and the Asian Media, to present a lantern festival called Paradise Eve. Myself and Counselor Rorback are working with the folks from the HRC to make sure that this happens, it's going to be May 31st, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's something different, it's a celebration of culture, it's going to be culture entertainment, food, a lantern festival, we've been working out some of the details, and it has the potential to be pretty good, so finally, just a blessed Palm Sunday to anyone who celebrates, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman?
Thank you, Your Honor, nothing this evening.
Mrs. Marsh?
Just to elaborate on Councilman Muir's comment about the trash talk, or the talk about our trash collection services in Madison Huts, it's Monday, it's 6 o'clock, and it's at the Breckenridge Room, I think, yes, yes, we were trying to find a good venue, depending on how many people RSVP, so you know, you're still welcome to come out, just because you didn't RSVP doesn't mean you're not welcome, we have plenty of room.
Anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Just wanted to inform the voters of the Laneyford School District that the special election ballots will be going out at the end of this week, and to all those that have, are on the permanent ballot list, or have already submitted an application for absentee ballot, if you still need one, please feel free to go online, contact our office, or contact the Secretary of State's office for an application.
Thank you, Councilor Rorback?
Thank you all for coming out, and I also...
And I also wanted to wish everybody who celebrates Ramadan Mubarak. It's been a long month of fasting for many people in our community. So I know that Eid is the end of Ramadan. It's on March thirtieth this year. So I hope everybody that celebrates has a blessed Eid. And that is all I've got tonight. Thanks.
Councilman Soltis? All right. Thank you. So thank you for coming out and providing us with this information and with the tickets. I appreciate it. And we'll make sure that Councilman Fleming gets his ticket as well. Just want to remind everybody that our next meeting is going to be on Tuesday, April fifteenth. It's going to be here. It's going to be 7:30. It is actually going to be after our budget meeting. Our budget meeting is at 6:00. So I invite you to come to that as well. Both of those are public. The time is 7:50. This meeting is adjourned. Would you like to do the honors? You don't have to. Have a good night.
Mark, congratulations.
And the guy you were sitting beside was one of my... Yes.